Okay, the next public hearing is to consider draft ordinance, Bellham Municipal Code 20.15, Regulations for Temporary Shelters.
I'll just preface again, Planning Community Development Department brings forward the Planning Commission recommendation on this matter. As council is aware, an interim control is in place right now to allow for facilities such as these temporary shelters to be established in public zoning districts. This ordinance would remedy that, and we took the opportunity to clear some inconsistencies, which Lisa will outline more fully.
Okay, as Rick stated, these are amendments to the temporary shelter regulations that were approved in October of 2018. They establish the zoning, health, and safety standards for temporary shelters. And the temporary shelters are differentiated from interim housing in that they have a limited term timeframe associated with them. And they include temporary tent encampments, temporary tiny house encampments, temporary building encampments, and temporary safe parking areas. And we do have four applications that were submitted and approved with these regulations. Two tent encampments that are no longer in operation, they were operated by Homes Now. We have one tiny house encampment that is currently in operation in Fairhaven, and that is operated by Homes Now. And then one building encampment, which is the women's shelter currently in operation at Civic Field. And that is the permit that really prompted the amendments to the regulations because it is located in a public zone, and our original regulations did not allow building encampments in public zones. So these are a very narrow set of recommendations that the Planning Commission recommended. I'll just go through them briefly. The first one is to allow the temporary building encampments in public zones with a type-two permit, which is that administrative permit approved by the planning director. They were originally allowed only in certain zones due to the five-year timeframe. They were currently prohibited from public zones due to concerns about programming and lack of suitable sites. But upon additional analysis, those issues have been resolved, and it allows the city and other entities that have this public zoning to be nimble in providing shelter. The second change is to require managing agencies of temporary shelters that are accessory to church buildings to comply with building and fire codes or to seek an exemption. These types of accessory shelters are currently exempt from our temporary shelter permit, and there's no change proposed to that. However, our legal staff does recommend compliance with building and fire codes for health and safety reasons, or the entities can seek an exemption from state building codes. The third change is to exempt adverse weather shelters of a very short duration from a temporary shelter permit. And the current process to do so is cumbersome, as it uses a section of our code that's really associated with natural disasters. So exempting these shelters from the temporary shelter permit really allows these facilities to be established in a timely and quick manner, not only this winter, but in future winters. And the fourth change is to provide the city with the ability to close a shelter if there are serious health or safety concerns until compliance is achieved. And this was recommended by our legal staff. Our interim housing ordinance also includes this section. So between the Planning Commission recommendation and the ordinance that you see tonight, we did make some changes, really just for consistency with the interim housing ordinance. And some examples of those include that we added a rationale, which is health and safety reasons for obtaining identification from guests. Only managing agencies with experience with sex offenders may request a waiver from that prohibition. And then managing agencies in the police department are required to establish appropriate procedures for access and coordination, because that is a really unique case-by-case situation. So with that, staff in the Planning Commission are recommending approval of the draft ordinance, amending the temporary shelter regulations, and we're happy to take any questions.
Any questions, council? Okay, Elizabeth?
No one signed up.
Has there anybody here that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn it back to council. Mr. Hamill?
Actually, I do have a question. On Amendment 4, page 54 of the pack that allow adverse weather shelters of very short duration to be established without a temporary shelter permit under BMC 20.15.100.8.3, that does not resolve the issue with emergency workers. Does a coed or community organizations active in disasters, that's the acronym. There was an issue a year ago with certain volunteers that could not perform as volunteers because they were trained only as disaster-oriented volunteers, but this, I just want to confirm that this amendment does not resolve that issue, is that correct?
I don't believe it does, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead.
I'll move to approve.
Dr. Member Vargas moves to approve. Councilmember Hamill seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. We will now go to our 15-minute public comment period.
Next three speakers are Joseph McDonald, Louis Walbrecht, and Doug Gustafson.
Thanks, Eric.
Good evening. My name is Louis Walbrecht, and I'm here tonight from Lydia Place. First off, my colleagues and I would like to acknowledge all of the work that the council is doing.
Could you get a little closer to the mic so we can hear you? There you go.
Is this better?
That's better.
I can tilt it up, too.
Yeah, you can move it up. There you go.
First off, my colleagues and I would like to acknowledge all of the work that the council is doing to address the current housing crisis, and thank you for continually listening to the needs of our community members. For the sake of furthering the much-needed conversation on the housing crisis, we would like to share some of the accounts of the individuals and families that have been served by Lydia Place. These accounts are unique, but they represent many of the trends, experiences, and experiences of homelessness that often go unnoticed in our community. The first family that I'm going to talk about is a family of four with two parents and two young children. Although they were living in a motor home, there was a roof leak, and they were unable to afford that repair. This let in below-freezing temperatures and created a damp environment. This motor home also served as the main source of transportation for this household, and the high cost of maintenance meant that it often broke down and was not reliable. In addition, the appliances in the motor home did not work, which meant that storing and heating up milk for the baby was a daily concern. The family worked very hard to meet their family's needs, including enrolling their older child in school and maintaining appointments with their providers. To avoid tickets and fines, the family had to move their motor home often, unfortunately resulting in their child having a difficult time getting to school consistently. Although they received gas vouchers, those were also very inconsistent. This next household is a single mother with a young child, a five-year-old. While the family was able to find housing before the start of winter, these colder months were still not without their challenges. This family had no vehicle, and over the winter getting to and from places, including just to and from the bus stop, was very difficult. This child had ongoing health challenges, and accessing services to support their needs meant more trips on the bus and more time out in the cold weather. This mother was working, but school closures due to the weather and holidays meant that missed workdays also were something that they had to deal with on a regular basis. Rent was always a priority, but that often meant sacrificing some of the other needs of that household. These are, again, are just some of the examples, but we do feel like they are representative of many of the experiences that our clients have. On behalf of the clients that we have the privilege of supporting, thank you for the work that you have done and continue to do to lessen the challenges for those experiencing homelessness and to create pathways to safe housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Gustafson, Chairman of Homes Now. Homes Now currently operates Unity Village, located at 210 McKenzie in Fairhaven. Unity Village houses, right now, we house 18 people. We have capacity for 20. We're going to fill the last two tiny homes soon. We are extremely thankful to the city for continuing to be a valuable partner with us in maintaining Unity Village. Our previous permit is set to expire April 30th, 2020. Originally, when we thought that this was our last site and that there'd be nowhere to move to, we got a petition together to extend our current permit. Now, the permit was pretty restrictive in the sense that it had like a hard cutoff date, so we kind of wanted the neighborhood and people in the local area to sign a petition to say that they wanted us to stay. Now, everywhere that Homes Now has stayed or been to, the neighborhood has said that they miss us and they want us to come back. We welcome that. Now that the city has agreed, and I thank Mayor Fleetwood for helping with that, announcing that on the record, that the city is helping us find another site to move Unity Village to. The petition is just to show that we got 316 signatures. The signatures kind of stopped as soon as like the city said that they would help us find another site, and the conditions of the petition have been fulfilled to extend Unity Village. Not to extend the permit, but to extend the village, whether it's at the location we're at or at another location. And so I don't know where to turn this petition into tonight.
You can give it to Elizabeth.
Oh, okay, I'll do that. But we're really glad that we can continue to be partners. We're really glad we can move forward into the future and that we can provide housing. We want to set up multiple sites as well. We have a private landowner who stepped up, but it's outside the city limits, and that site will not be ready by April. So we are eager to work with the city and set up more sites and get more people housed. You know, Homes Now and Unity Village represents emergency housing. It provides actual stable housing for people while they get back on their feet and find permanent housing. It does not interfere with any housing programs that are currently being implemented, because these houses, these structures are temporary, they can be moved around as the situation changes, whether we're at one site for two years, or six months, or whatever. It can be moved around. And we can set up in sites that are not suitable for standard development. So even though we're happy that the city has helped us with this next site that we're going to be going to, we would like to set up even more sites and house more people and get more people off the streets and improve the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just give them to her, she'll take it. He can take it.
Next three speakers are Michael Moynihan, Philip Breskin, and Scott Patten.
Go ahead, Michael.
Good evening. My name is Michael Moynihan, Jr. I was a Homes Now bystander, an onlooker from the fence. Then I was an applicant, and then a volunteer builder at the Fairhaven site. And now I'm currently a resident at the Fairhaven location. Go big or go tiny homes, I'd say. So the Unity Village is on a quarter acre. It has a very small carbon footprint. Specifically, our electrical consumption and water consumption is pretty small. We've gone through a little, Homes Now has a little roller coaster history. We had to reorganize, we had to rebuild. We've gone through our bylaws and set up rules, and we've policed our own people, and that hasn't been fun or easy, but at least we're kind of coming out of the fog. So here we are, April's approaching. We are in dialogue about the extension and other possible sites. As a son of this great city, from my heart, I'd have to say that this project is great. It's a great project for the community. It involves the elements of social capital and collective efficacy. And I'd just like to encourage people to get on board, become a community participant through this program. Go big or go tiny homes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Flip Breskin. I live on Cherry Street in the Columbia neighborhood. It's nice to see familiar faces. I was invited, as the storm was coming in, as the freeze was beginning, to join Heather Catton and Sherri, whose last name I've forgotten, to try to get out and find the homeless people who were not at the mission, and let them know that the storm was coming and that there were alternative shelters. And I was shocked, and I was broken-hearted, because I talked with many people who had no idea the storm was coming, and they had no idea that there were shelters available. We're talking about people in shirt sleeves as the temperature's dropping to 20 degrees and the wind's kicking up. And it turns out that the mission is not able to serve everyone. They have needs that don't work. There are people who are not connected with other people. They're frightened enough that nobody had told them, they hadn't been talking with anybody, so they had no idea the storm was coming. And I spent the week out on the street with food, with, I hit up my neighbors, and they were wonderful, showed up with gloves and hand warmers and hats and socks and coats and sleeping bags. But I kept hearing about the hot team, that there is some formal city homeless outreach, but apparently not on the weekends, not on holidays, and quite possibly not at night. And who was doing the work was a bunch of old ladies. I'll be 70 next year, and I don't know how long I can keep doing this. So I'm here to ask for your help to do outreach that reaches everyone, if possible, and way more people than are reached right now. There were rules at the library such that they were not permitted to post which homeless shelters were open on each day, and it changed from day to day. There were, the folks we were talking to didn't have cell phones, didn't have newspapers, didn't have TV, and many of them didn't have communities, so they didn't have anybody telling them what was coming. And it's not who are we, it's who do we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Flip.
Hello, my name's Scott Patten. I'm at 1021 24th Street in Happy Valley neighborhood. Sorry, that's hard to follow. What she said, at 24-years-old, I went from being a healthy, taxpaying member of society, and with one seizure, I was a disabled young man. I'm 31 now, and if it wasn't for the help of my family, my parents, my friends, some people at WorkSource, some people just willing to lend a hand, I would be one of those people in a tent. It shouldn't take that much to keep people from becoming homeless. And it's amazing, when you talk to people, how they got where they got. And it's amazing how often we prejudicially assume it's drugs or alcohol, or a psychological disorder or something. It doesn't take that much to end up on the street. It really doesn't. What we do is pretty much the same as Flip. Quite often, what we have is boogie bags, basic equipment for homeless people, whether it's a tent, a tarp. Tents are the best, you know, but the timing of when we deliver them is crucial. And the reason why is because cold weather comes in, police will sweep a neighborhood, quite often they'll tell people they have to leave at a certain time, regardless of what the weather change is going to be. We then offer to be able to get them shit, the kind of materials they need, whether it's blankets, boots, a tent, and they have to say, wait, we know the cops are going to come back and slash up the tents while they're in the trash cans. Bring them at another time. They have to be able to time out when we can be able to deliver goods to these people because they're afraid of their own law enforcement in the community that they live in. And I just want it to be known that's how they live, is with this fear, and it shouldn't have to be that way. Slashing up tents after cleaning up the tents camping sites so that they can't take their shelter out of the trash can and use it again is not just wrong, it's inhuman, and it's not who we are. We can be better than this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your election.
Sandy Soderberg, Mary McIntosh, and Joanne Patten.
There is a microphone right there. Go ahead. Press the button.
Is it on now?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Nice. My name is Sandy Soderberg, and I own some property in Bellingham, off of Klein Road. And I've been in Wacom County since 1980. My family arrived in America in 1732. To see this happening just breaks my heart, and I'm sorry if I'm getting emotional. This should not be happening. We should not have people on the streets. We should not have people not with a place to sleep. I have 1.94 acres, but it's not within your city limits, but it's in your UGA. And I know that that doesn't solve the problem right now, to move Unity Village, because they need an extension currently, and because the zoning does not approve of that. But I want to take this property, and I want to allow a village to be built on my land so that we can help these people, help our neighbors. Whatever I can do to help that, I can't do a lot, but I can give this land to be used, and that's what I'd like to do. So with the help of the county and the help of the city, because it's currently zoned county, but it is in a UGA, I think that they can work together to be able to use this land to help transition people off the streets and give them a place where they can have some dignity and find integrity to transition themselves, have motivation to find the resources that they need to help themselves. And so if anybody has any questions when this is all finished, I'd be happy to talk with you about my land and about what would need to be done in order to use this for helping our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary McIntosh. I am fairly new to the county, and I actually live in the county, but I run a Facebook group called Bellingham Living. And I can tell you that as people are considering relocation here to Bellingham, to the area, homelessness is the biggest concern that they have, because they see, they see the number of people that there are here that are unsheltered. And I heard about the person that died during the day, and whose body was found at 4:00 PM, during the day, right on C Street. And I can't stop thinking about that. One of the things that I have noticed that is a huge concern, is that the Bellingham, City of Bellingham's process is to check in at the lighthouse. I can tell you, I wouldn't check in at a religious organization. And I imagine that there are probably lots of people without homes who would feel untrusting and possibly concerned about going to a religious organization in order to check in. And I would really like to just ask why that is the policy, especially if they are to be sheltered at one place that's across town, but they have to check in at the mission, and there is no transportation from one place to the next. It just doesn't make any sense. And it doesn't make any sense for a city policy to be, to check in at a religious organization. And I would just like you to consider possibly changing that policy. I don't know if it's a written policy, or if it's just the way you do things, but I have heard that a lot of people won't check in at the mission, and then they die during the day, and their bodies are found at 4:00 PM on C Street. And that's just not, it's not, it's not okay, I guess, for anybody to be put in that position. That's my opinion. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joanne Patten. I'm mostly here to just say, well, first of all, congratulations and welcome, and welcome, very much welcome. I don't want to battle with a mayor anymore. I think that's going to be a huge thing for Homes Now. I volunteered with Homes Now for a couple of years now, and it's grown, it's gotten better, and hopefully we'll never have to camp in the front lawn out here again, ever. Please continue to support us, please. What are you?
I'm not being a Marcus.
Yeah. Anyway, yes, please, it's getting bigger, it's getting better. It's grown huge, so, so much more organized. And I went to the Unity Village the other day, and I couldn't believe it, compared to having tents in the front lawn out here, and how far, and how it's grown. Thank you, and continue to support us, please, please. Thank you. We're all one paycheck away from being out there in the cold. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it? That's all that's signed up? Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Come on down, Marcus. Anybody that wishes to, please come on down now and get in line so we can, you know.
Hello. I'm Marcus D. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. I'm Marcus D. I am the Vice Chair of Homes Now, Program Director for Homes Now, and I also sit on the Wacom County Homeless Strategies Work Group as the homeless advocate for Wacom County, a council-appointed position. The time that I've spent with homelessness here in Bellingham has been whirlwind. I started out with the Homes Now advocacy, drawn along by the momentum that Joanne was just speaking of, and drawn along by, of course, the need we all see in the streets. I dissociated myself somewhat with Homes Now and became more independent along the time that Winter Haven was opened up, for various reasons. My advocacy did not end, and my support for Homes Now did not end. I see it as a successful model. I continue to see it as a successful model. I continue to see it as the leading, cheapest, best, safest, best rehabilitative model in Bellingham today. I encourage city leaders, I encourage other nonprofits, to please follow our lead and build tiny home villages immediately. I believe that when we leave a site, that site should be considered for another site immediately. We should have reflective populace within neighborhoods of our town that show, that reflect the homelessness in our populace, and salt that throughout the city and absorb that ourselves. Our advocacy has helped to change the perspective on homelessness in Bellingham in a very big way, and I'm very proud to have been any part of it. It's not such a reach to say that previous incarnations of Bellingham government, the homelessness issue was more one of get out of the city, was some of the solutions that were brought and that were proffered. Since we've been here, and since we've been humanizing this, and since we've been doing the work that we've been doing, I'm so happy to see so many civic leaders stepping up and saying, these are our citizens. In fact, many of them have been their whole lives here, and many of them pay taxes, many of them are veterans, they have paid plenty, and they're still relegated to living on the streets. We've heard people talk about religious institutions as a barrier. We've talked, we hear the outreach. I was part of the outreach last year. I helped spearhead the outreach last year. Homes Now is supportive of the outreach team that goes out, as we heard Flip speaking of earlier tonight. It's tragic. You don't need to see but one person laying on the street, help them into a Mylar sleeping bag, and lay them back down on the pavement and say, good luck, we'll be back in a few hours, hopefully. We've got to do better. The work that I've done on the Homeless Strategies Work Group with Wacom County and with other partners here in the city, it's not enough. I've said so within the work group, and I continue to say so. We need to do, we need to do this all together. I appreciate the partnership that I feel with the city and with the county as we move forward, and look forward to working with you all as we solve homelessness in Bellingham. Thanks.
Thank you. Next. Next. Yep.
My name is Ryder. I am a renter in the city. And I'm up here—I wasn't planning on speaking, but after hearing all these people speak, I'm just kind of frankly appalled at how much work that we have to do to fight with the city, to get our neighbors off the streets and to take care of people that need to be taken care of in our city. These aren't like another group of people. This is our community, these are our neighbors. And, you know, what we get is another Scotty Brown's in Barclay Village. We don't need that. We don't need any of the things that are going up in Bellingham. We have plenty of space to house these people, and we're putting in useless things. We're letting it be taken up with dead blackberry bushes that don't do anything for our environment or for our community. And every meeting, we have people up here, plenty of groups up here, giving you solutions and giving the city solutions, and we just resist them and we don't do anything. And now people are dying in residential neighborhoods where there are homes on both sides of the street. And that's appalling for a city that considers itself progressive. And I'm up here just imploring you as the new council that maybe you can fucking do something. Thank you.
Keep the language down, folks. That's not tolerated in the chambers.
This shouldn't be tolerated in our city.
Well, you won't get away with that again. Go ahead, next. This will be our last speaker.
Hi. My name is Michael Sudoff. I'm a city resident. I just recently had a friend who was homeless, and I think it's important to note how many people are put into the judicial system and how that system is designed to spit them out and not have very good support. And for a lot of those people, the mission is the only location. Being there to help my friend has really given me an opportunity to see what it's like to be inside that and hear the story of what it's like in transition, in a place in your life when you need to make important choices for parole or whatever, judicial reasons or whatever. And in an environment like that, it's really difficult. Not only are you dealing with screaming and someone kicking you right next to you on the floor in the middle of the night, hard to get good sleep, be in a good state where you can make good choices and healthy mind and body and whatnot. The drugs that are around there are very apparent, meth or coke, who knows what's in those white bags with rocks and whatnot. Yeah, and alcohol, who wouldn't want to take a couple drinks here and there to ease the pain of dealing and being in a situation where it's not very dignable? And I can't imagine how many families who are put in homelessness, and I would not choose to go down there either with your youth or your spouse or whatever. But it's not on them, it's on the city to—and the fact that you guys are choosing them as our only sole provider. But times can change, and I'd love to see that you guys are willing and bending and making amendments to our policies of homelessness. And thank you for taking those steps. But, yeah, we can't help but keep on repeating that we need to ease away from them as our only option. And to make healthy choices, you've got to have options. So please, keep this progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
And next, we have a resolution regarding surplus property at 611 Texas Street. On October 22nd, 2018, council voted to declare the property at 611 Texas Street a surplus to the city's needs, but moved to postpone selecting a method of disposition to the Public Works and Natural Resources Committee for further discussion. Today's action ratifies council's action on October 22nd, 2018 through the adoption of the attached resolution. As a request for proposal to affordable housing providers for this property had one respondent, Kulshan Community Land Trust, staff recommends that this parcel is disposed of through negotiation by. If disposed of by special disposition—it's allowed dispositions—staff recommends the city require a restrictive covenant to ensure the long-term benefit to low-income households. On this one as well, the committee voted unanimously to recommend an ISO proof.
Second. Motion been made by Councilmember Huthman, second by Councilmember Lillicust. Any discussion?
Okay.
Yes.
In addition, Kulshan Community Land Trust is offering $0 for property valued at $160,000 in exchange for constructing a single-family home, which will be permanently affordable for purchase by low-income households.
Okay. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item number three. The consideration of initiating a partnership to operate a safe parking pilot program. The city invests a significant amount of funding in housing solutions to address homelessness. Unfortunately, the funding and resources available to our community are inadequate to build and operate the entirety of permanent solutions needed in a timely manner. So we look to find ways to address the public health and safety concerns for those that are experiencing homelessness. Staff seeks council direction on whether it wants to, one, attempt to find a partner to initiate a safe parking pilot program, and, two, fund fully or in part such a program. A budget amendment would be a future council action if staff is able to identify a suitable partner或operator through a request for proposal process. And the committee was asked to provide direction, and the committee was supportive, of continuing —of staff continuing to seek a partner in a safe parking program.
There was no motion. Questions? Councilmember Vargas.
I do have a question. What are we offering to pay for?
Come on up, Rick.
In this matter, we're going to submit a RFP for response, and we're offering help reimburse partial costs, cost for facilities, cost for land, if that's what's necessary in order to be able to enable it. We're reaching out to our faith-based and not-for-profit organizations. We know on a volunteer basis, they don't have the capacity to mount this effort. Their hands are full with many other efforts. However, if we're able to reimburse costs or provide some recompense to them, they might consider hiring someone that could help coordinate that effort. So when you looked at the budget, you saw it was sort of a $0 to $200,000, and that's based on a partner coming forward who offers to do it gratis to serve the community. And the $200,000 is the Seattle model, where it was fully staffed and operated by the city. And we're not sure till we have something that comes back, so we'll see what we get from the RFP, and we'll return for consideration of an amendment to fund it.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Raffado.
Yeah, I think it would be—I think staff—it would be helpful to staff to have a motion for the full council. It could just be supportive of the two elements identified in the agenda bill.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilmember Hamel, second by Councilmember Anderson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Fourth item. This is a consideration of an ordinance amending the Fountain District Urban Village Development Regulations and Permitted Uses. The proposed ordinance would amend the development regulations with the FDUV to increase the allowable floor area ratio, also known as the FAR, in the commercial core area from 1.5 to 2.5, and in a portion of the commercial transition area from 0.6 to 1.5. It would increase the bicycle parking requirements to be consistent with other urban village regulations and amend the permitted uses in the commercial transition areas to allow schools, art schools, and institutions of higher education as a conditional use. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on September 19th, 2019, and thereafter issuing findings of fact, conclusions, and a recommendation to approve the proposed amendments. The committee voted unanimously to recommend an ISO move.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilmember Huthman, second by Councilmember Vargas. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
And that is end of committee.
Thanks. Dan.
Sure, I'll go ahead. Last Tuesday, I was in Olympia. I was invited down by Representative—well, I was on a panel, affordable housing panel, invited by Representative Nicole McCray. She's a representative out of Seattle. Also, Michelle Thomas from the Washington Low Income Housing Alliance. I read the following statement. I'm going to read this statement now, it's very brief, and I'm going to ask for a motion when I'm done here. And this is pursuant to Mayor's office. Brian Heinrich went through some House bills here previously. The staggering complexity of our housing crisis requires diverse resources, partnerships, and a degree of nimbleness to respond adequately based on local conditions. House Bill 1590 provides a degree of flexibility so that jurisdictions can deploy new local option dollars in ways that leverage other public, private, and philanthropic funds and fills gaps that constrain housing production, behavioral health treatment, and jail diversion. In Bellingham and Wacom County, the shortage of capital, operating, and behavioral health services funding is constraining the production of housing with integrated behavioral health services for people who are homeless. House Bill 1590 will help our community attract more nonprofit developers, leverage matching funding, and pay for supportive housing and behavioral health services that are currently so difficult to fund. Bellingham and Wacom County have created and invested considerable local resources over the last 10 years, including Wacom—including Wacom County's behavioral health sales tax. That's a 1/10th of 1% sales tax, and the City of Bellingham's own housing levy. This levy, known as the Bellingham Home Fund, generated $21 million in revenue that was leveraged seven times, at least seven times over, through outside funds. At the end of the day, this effort brought in over $150 million in revenue. Our goal was to build 415 units, build and preserve 415 units of housing. We built and preserved over 700 units of housing and provided rent relief for thousands of impoverished families over the last seven years. That's what the City of Bellingham did. Yet there are still over 700 people experiencing unsheltered homelessness in our community and thousands more that are housing fragile. Our first responders report to us that the overwhelming majority of the calls that they receive have a behavioral health component as a primary reason for the response. House Bill 1590 will provide the option to increase the impact of and the reach of existing resources, will attract new resources and partners, and make progress towards important goals: reducing homelessness, preventing incarceration, improving the health and well-being of many of our most vulnerable residents. House Bill 1590 provides a meaningful local option response to our community's behavioral health and housing crises. Enacted at the county level, it would provide immediate relief to those experiencing homelessness or housing instability in our rural areas that are currently not served by the Bellingham Home Fund. This is important. House Bill 1590 could provide equity for our rural neighbors. Rather than creating an island of haves and a sea of have-nots, it would help level the playing field for households in all of Washington's 39 counties. I was elected to provide leadership on some of our community's most pressing and complex problems. House Bill 1590 provides me and my elected colleagues the option to exercise that leadership to advance proven solutions. Now, therefore, I move that council direct the mayor and staff to write a letter of support for House Bill 1590 directed to Representative Dolio and other sponsors of this House bill.
Motion been made by Councilmember Hamel, second by Councilmember Vargas. Any discussion? Very well said, Dan. Go ahead.
Just thank you, Dan, for paying attention to this issue and bringing forward a solution.
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.